Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. We will begin as we always do with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right, let's resume. We have a full agenda tonight. We will begin in just a few seconds with Mrs. Malvahill and the reorganization of the board as we always do after the most recent election. Before we do that, however, I would like to welcome two new members to our board. One is a returning member, Helen Donahue is here with us, and a new member, Matt Lane. So Helen, we're going to start with you, and then Matt, if you'd just take a few seconds to say hello to folks, and then we'll move on to the reorganization.
Thank you so much. Very happy to be back.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you very much, Mr. Maloney. Thank you, and thank you to the voters, and I'm ready to get to work.
All right. Thank you very much. Very concise. We appreciate that. All right. All right, we'll move on to the reorganization now, and I'm going to turn it over to Christina Malvahill, who's done this more than once. Christina, are you ready? All right, go ahead.
Are there any nominations for chairman? Selectman Donahue?
Thank you. Members of the board, I nominate William Plasko for chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Ready to a vote? Helen?
Yes, in favor.
Selectman Hajar?
Aye.
Selectman Maloney?
Aye.
Selectman Plasko?
Aye.
Selectman Lane?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Selectman Plasko, as the new chairman.
Thank you. Do you want me to take over right now, Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Bill. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the clerk of the board. You've done it before, so go ahead.
Yeah, and it should be pretty routine, what for nomination, appointment to the clerk of the board.
Nominate?
I nominate Christina Malvahill to be the clerk of the board.
Second.
Aiden seconded. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous. And once again, you'll serve us well, I'm sure, Mrs. Malvahill.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to bring up the concept of having a vice chair on the board. I'd like to make that motion and hopefully discuss it.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
All right, discussion?
On the motion, yes. So, I know it's not tradition in this town to have a vice chair of the board's selectmen. However, for the past number of years, as long as I know, and I'm sure Helen and Bill know, that the previous vice chair has served as chair in absence of the chair. So, I would just like to formalize that process. I'm not sure I understand why we don't have a vice chair. I did my own little survey of eighty-three towns, and of those eighty-three, fifty-four of them were five-member boards, and only three of them didn't have a vice chair. Seems pretty natural to have one, so that we know definitely ahead of time. I know we like to say, well, we have this informal practice where the previous vice chair becomes the chair, and we know that. So if that's the case, I don't know why we just don't formalize it, like ninety-four percent of the other five-member boards do, and say officially, our vice chair is, and whoever was the previous chair, insert their name, and do it. I just think it makes us a little bit more official. I know Norwood has its unique ways, but the organization of the board's selectmen doesn't need to be that unique, where we just sit up and say, well, we'll decide every meeting what happens. I think, as a professional organization, the highest elected body in town, to say that we have a number two is not that big of a deal, and we should be willing to say that. So, naming the previous chair as the vice chair, and just, that's their title, that's fine with me. You know, we don't have to have an actual election. We can just say, this is our formal vice chair is the previous chair.
That's just Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry I can't agree with you, Selectman Hajar, and the reason for that is because, in some circumstances, it may be that the work of the board is more noted by one member of the board or another, and say, for example, this about buying, selling the property up Bloomwood, something like that, just an example of a traffic. We have a system that's worked beautifully for, you know, over a hundred years, and I think that we should just leave it the way it is.
Any other comments? I would just say that I think our system has worked well. I think there is a difference way of looking at things in other towns who choose to have a vice chair, but what I just heard from Mr. Hajar is simply formalizing what our practice is. And if that's the intent that the immediate past chairman, he recognizes the vice chairman, and his absence, if they're both absent, then the senior member would take over, then we, in my opinion, could put that in writing, if that's what you like, the idea of it being formal and acknowledged instead of just past practice, because we're not changing anything, we're just formalizing it. I might have a debate to do if we're talking about changing things.
No, all I was suggesting is that we sort of formalize the informal way that we've been operating. At least, we all know as a permanent status that the next coming year, if it's Mr. Maloney, and then next year it's Mr. Plasko, that's fine with me. I don't think we, I wasn't necessarily pushing for a separate election for that position every year. I would just like to formalize in writing what we've been doing as a board for a long, long time, but I think it just gives a little bit more organizational efficiency and understanding that we do have a vice chair.
Any other comments? Yes, Maloney?
Just, it's really not an informal practice, it's a traditional one, but if it makes anybody happy to put it in writing, that's fine by me. Basically, it would be the most recent past chairman would serve as the de facto vice chairman. In his or her absence, it would be the senior member of continuous, current continuous service. Want to put it in writing? Maybe, Mr. Hajar, you want to put it in writing?
Exactly as you stated, both you and Bill stated, it's fine with me, and you can consider that a motion.
Okay.
All right, so if that's the motion and it passes, I'll write something up, distribute it to the board, and we make it official that everyone agrees. It's not very fancy language, but we'll just make sure everybody reviews it before we make it a hundred percent formal or official. So, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so that'll pass four to one. Mrs. Donahue in opposition. All right, anything else at this point, or can we move on to new business? Before we do that, I would join Mr. Maloney in welcoming our newest member, Mr. Lane, and any help, anything you need getting started. Every one member of the board will be very happy to assist and work with you, also, I'm thrilled. Mrs. Donahue, welcome back. Great to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko.
All right, with that, our next item is new business, is a town meeting adjournment requirement. Last week, we had a brief meeting, we had a brief discussion of this, and we were joined by moderator Dave Hearn, who was with us again tonight, having to do with legislation that was recently passed that would allow the selectmen to lower the quorum in consultation and agreement with the moderator. Anyone like to start discussion on this matter? Mr. Hearn, you have any opinions you'd like to share before we get into this?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the board, good evening. I don't have any strong opinion one way or another, other than to say that whatever might be adopted in terms of reducing the quorum, if it is, I hope it will not be taken as discouraging participation at town meeting, because we hope that as many of the town meeting members as possible will attend the meeting the next Monday evening.
Okay. I personally agree with that. I think we all want the normal quorum and even more to show up. A hundred percent would be historical, but outstanding. But in these times, and the fact that the legislature saw fit to give the town this security to make sure they can get their business done, I think it's appropriate that we give it consideration. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was reading this in the agenda, I was worried, and so I started to talk individually with some of the other board members. This been discussion is going as low as ten percent, and that was one figure that I heard when talking with other board members individually. And this is in an unusual condition, where Mr. Hearn, Mr. Moderator, and I can agree that we should get the biggest percentage as the board will vote for, because I think to take, to consider it ten percent is way, way, way too low. And I agree with moderator Hearn that I'm going to go as high as we can, you know? And I think that you may have mentioned thirty-three percent, Mr. Moderator?
I, no, Mrs. Donahue, I haven't mentioned any percent.
Okay. What is your, what is your offer, then? What is your?
It's not mine to make an offer. It's up to the board of selectmen may vote it, and it must be in consultation with the moderator and with the approval of the moderator. I understand, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to speak out of turn, and I apologize. For some reason, I don't have all of you on camera on my screen. Technology has defeated me once again. But if, Mrs. Donahue, I don't have a particular figure in mind. This is a tool that the legislature has given the town, so that the towns are more likely, regardless of circumstances, the towns are more likely to be able to hold a town meeting without worrying about whether they'll get their usual quorum. I expect we're going to get a good number next Monday evening, but this board may want to recommend a lower number, and we can go as low as ten percent. I don't know whether people want to do that. But again, this is a tool. It's only temporary, it's only during the emergency, and once we're out of the emergency, it would revert to the usual rules. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Mr. Hajar, I see your hand?
Yes, so, I thought about this long and hard, because on one hand, you want the number low enough so that we don't get caught not being able to conduct business, because we don't get that number. And two, on the other side, I'm torn that I want to make sure when we're voting a two-hundred-million-plus budget, that we have enough people to pass it and discuss it as they see fit. So, I was the one that I think was tossing around the thirty-three percent number. I can be persuaded to go even lower, but that's the number that I'd like to put forward for a vote is thirty-three percent. That obviously one-third of the two-hundred-and-some-odd isn't a big number for people to show. I am hearing that most of the calls that have gone to town meeting members have received a positive response, that they plan on showing, which is really a good thing. So, that's where I stand, Mr. Chairman.
All right, just to be, just to be clear, the percentage that we're talking about is a percentage of the current quorum, not of the total membership. Mr. Hearn, did I see your hand?
That's the point I wanted to make. It's the quorum that can be reduced. Our quorum, by our bylaw, is a majority of the town meeting members. And the count, I don't have the exact count of town meeting members elected and returning, but our normal, I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty-two plus the moderator, so two-fifty-three, so half of that would be one-twenty-seven, or majority of that is one-twenty-seven, or one-twenty-eight. We'll get the exact number from the clerk. If we, we're authorized to reduce it to ten percent of that number, not ten percent of the, I mean, ten percent of the quorum number, not ten percent of the membership.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am problem, I think I am optimistic that we're going to get an actual quorum anyway, but I'm wrong more often than I'm right whenever I try to predict things. I cannot see any reason why we would not go to ten percent. Which doesn't mean we only want ten percent, it means that the worst possible thing that could happen is if we name a figure like thirty-three percent and we get three, and then, and then we can't have a town meeting, even though we had enough, we could have had enough people to do it. So I think if you combine the lowest possible number, which is ten percent, with a determined effort to convince people to come down, show up, and vote on their town's budget, I think that's the happiest, I think that's the happiest arrangement we could have. So I'm in favor of just going to the lowest number the legislature will allow, knowing that we intend to try to get as many people as possible there to do the town's business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, if, if we need regularly a hundred-and-twenty-seven people, is that right?
I believe that's accurate, Mrs. Donahue.
So, ten percent would be twelve people?
Thirteen.
All right, thirteen, well, twelve-point-seven. Yeah, just twelve, for legal purposes, it's twelve. So, how are we going to say that we're going to have twelve people vote on a two-hundred-million-dollar budget? Two-hundred-two-million-dollar budget. All right, Mr. Hajar, if you want to make a motion, I'll be happy to second, second your motion.
Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, I'm just trying to do the math based on what Mr. Hearn said concerning that the number is based on the percentage of the quorum. So at thirty-three percent, we're asking for forty-two people. I think we're going to get way more than that. I guess I'm still convinced that thirty-three seems to be a good number. I do understand Tom's point, and it really is a good one. You don't want to go to the effort that we're going through to get, to get people there. We postponed it twice now to get to June twenty-second. We've limited what we want to discuss, and if we don't get that number, we have wasted a lot of time and effort. But if you're looking at, if it's just a percentage of the quorum, thirty percent is only forty-two, forty-two out of two-hundred-and-some-odd, that's really not that many. And you could probably count in my district alone forty-two people that are going to show up. So, I still feel comfortable that thirty-three percent should be a good number to have attend. So I'd make that as a motion.
I second it.
All right, anything further on the motion? Saying none will vote? Mr. Maloney, did I see your hand?
No, it's fine. I mean, I'll go along, but I'll tell you, if we get forty people to show up and we can't have this meeting, we're going to be very sorry. But if this is what the, if this is what we want, I'll go with it.
Okay, so we'll put it to a vote. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so we have a unanimous vote of the board of selectmen to consider lowering to thirty-three percent of the quorum. Mr. Hearn, are you in approval of that action?
It's acceptable, Mr. Chairman. Again, though, let's get as many people as we can to attend the meeting next Monday evening.
Absolutely agreed, sir. All right, thank you. I think that finishes that matter.
Thank you.
In that regard, do we have to, was your comment to Mr. Hearn now sufficient to formalize the requirement of the, of the House bill number four-seven-seven-seven?
Yeah, it says to vote, vote of the board of selectmen in consultation and approval with the moderator, and we just did that.
Okay, so that's his approval formally?
You have, you have my approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business is outdoor dining application approvals. We've had some changes since the last time we dealt with this matter. Mr. Mazuko, would you like to get into this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has a updated list of liquor licenses, or, no, sorry, not liquor licenses, outdoor dining applications in front of you, some of which are license holders. We are asking the board for a few things. One is to approve the amended slate or the updated slate of licensees. I think we're up to well over twenty. We're also asking that if the board, similar to what you've done with the outdoor dining applications that do not have all alcohol licenses, if you would be willing to allow the chairman to sign off on any that are alcohol licenses, once they've gone through the comprehensive interdepartmental review process, so that we may be able to expedite these in the future. We do have a few license holders who have not submitted yet, and if the board is meeting every two weeks, we wouldn't necessarily somebody to submit in the next couple of days and then have to wait two weeks. The review process that we go through these, and they were subject to regular follow-up by the Health Department and Building Inspection and Fire Inspection, is actually more comprehensive than any review process we normally do, because every application is signed off by the Planning Department, the Fire Department, Police Liquor Enforcement, and Police Safety, Public Works in the Health Department, and the Fire Department as well, and finally, the Managers' Office confirming that all of them have done that. So it's quite an intensive process that we go through to get these applications up and running.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mazuko, I want to thank you very much for all the work that you did to help the places here in South Norwood. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. The credit does go to the team that came together and did it, and the DPW and the Light Department that have been out there every day, but we are, we appreciate that.
We do too. Thank you.
Anything further on this matter? The suggestion by Mr. Mazuko on the board approving this list and giving authority to the chairman to deal with the alcohol sales that might come up, similar to the vote we already took on the, just the plane, outdoor dining in the absence of meetings. Anyone get a, approve that or deny a request? I'm sorry, someone say something?
I said so moved.
Okay, is there a second? A second? No second?
Yeah, Matt's, Matt made it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. Anything further on the motion, Mr. Hajar?
So, this is a change from what the board voted a few weeks ago, where at first we gave the chair authority on outdoor dining, but we didn't want to do that regarding alcohol, outdoor alcohol. So now, we're going to give both those to the chair in consultation and making sure general government is satisfied that everything is okay and in place.
That's his proposal on the motion, yes. Need further discussion? Saying none, we'll put it to a vote. Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair vote aye, that's unanimous vote on that matter. Thank you. Next business is matter on our agenda is the Forts Hill bid. Bids were taken yesterday and opened. We received four bids, and with that, Mr. Mazuko, would you like to give any further details, please?
There is an apparent winning bid. We do need to have it undergo further review by Town Council, so we'd ask the board, there's one of two options you have. One of them is simply to delay awarding the bid until a future meeting. The other, my recommendation would be that you award the bid to Continental Properties pending final review and approval of Town Council. They just had to check a couple of the items and work with the, with the final bidder to make sure that their bid was fully compliant.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So moved the manager's suggestion.
The suggestion of awarding, just on final approval?
Right.
Mr. Maloney? Well, I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, but I think that the, the outstanding issues with the winning, the so-called winning bidder are substantial enough. It might make more sense for us to not award anything until we can find out, until we find out whether or not they're willing to drop certain provisions that they put into an addendum. Kathy Conney is here, I don't know, and I don't know how deeply we should get into it. I'll go along with what everybody wants to do, but I think we should understand, there are some, there are a couple of issues here in that winning, that so-called winning bid. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Conney, have anything you think is pertinent you'd like to add at this time?
Not really, Mr. Plasko. The bids came in, as Mr. Maloney said, that there was, there was an addendum that was issued by the company. Attorney DeLuca is looking at it, and he will let us know, he'll advise us whether it's an acceptable bid or not.
Okay. Mr. Hajar?
Yes, I would, would rather wait until we have full agreement from Town Council, as well as maybe some sort of summary from Kathy about the winning bids and what their proposals were for that site, et cetera, just a short summary. But I don't feel comfortable, I know we're saying pending, I would just, on something this, of this magnitude to the town, we're talking a thirteen-million-dollar sale, I would rather wait for Town Council's final okay on the conditions that are being reviewed, to ensure that if they do fall out and we have to go to the second bidder, we haven't wasted people's time and gone through some, a vote that maybe should not have taken place. So I'm against this. I would just rather wait.
All right, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you please tell me when the addendum came in?
Mrs. Donahue, it was submitted along with their bid, their bid that they submitted yesterday at eleven o'clock.
So, yesterday, after the bids were submitted, and I talked with a member of the board, and I wasn't made aware of the addendum, that was a problem. So, I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your second?
I do, and with Mrs. Donahue's permission, perhaps we could agree to a motion. How did you phrase it, Mr. Mazuko? We'll, we'll put off taking a vote until we get?
Until, until you hear back from Town Council.
I would, I would move to that. I definitely want to hear from DeLuca on this before we go naming a buyer.
The only request I have for the board is that would you be willing to meet at a special meeting if we get the final okay from Town Council? He had a couple issues to read, so that might be an off-scheduled meeting. Otherwise, if we're waiting two weeks for the board to meet again, I believe the board will have to meet on the thirtieth. We just don't want to go actually closing on the property for a regular scheduled meeting.
It's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'm personally okay with that. Is there any way we can get a short summary of the bids received?
We can, we can get that to you, but just to refresh the board members and for, to remind the board members, and for the new board members, we did do an IFB process, so the sale is price-only. Their bids don't actually include their intentions for the property, that's the difference between the IFB process versus an RFP process, where we would be looking at rating the, rating the property based on proposal. So, most of them didn't actually include specifically what they were going to do. That's what I simply hears the price, and we award it to the highest qualified capable bidder.
All right, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By law, do we have a time limit which we have to respond?
Yes, Mrs. Donahue, we, thirty business days in which to respond, so that's forty-five calendar days to make an award.
Oh, so that, we do have enough time legally, then?
We do, and Town Council does have a copy of the proposal, the bid that they submitted, and our original IFB that we put out. So he's doing a comparison on it, and he's working on it as we speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything further? Otherwise, I'll set Mr. Maloney's motion to table the matter, and Mrs. Donahue, second that motion?
But does Mr. Mal, oh, I'm sorry. I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye unanimously, vote to table this matter until Town Council's completed his review and the manager's recommendation. Okay, now, the next item is a request from John Apria to be reappointed to as a member of the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term ending July one, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, it's pronounced Apria.
Apria, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
I, I moved to. I gotta learn that. He lives next door.
You should know that, Mr. Chairman. I moved that. Mr. Aprilia for a three-year term.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. I second that motion and I've had the honor to work with Mr. Aprilia on the Community Preservation Commission and he's doing an excellent job. He's a very, very astute, intelligent, wonderful member.
Good news. Thank you. All right, on the motion, Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's unanimous vote. Next item is Cemetery Ds for approval and signature?
Move to sign.
Second? All in favor, Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Miss, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimous vote. We have additional agenda. New business Edmund Melv- Edmund Melvahill, our Veterans submitting a request that the board allow American flags along Washington Street to remain in place until after July fourth.
Washington approve.
That's. All in favor, Paul, Maloney?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
And the chairman votes aye. That vote is unanimous. Timothy McDonagh, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, submitted a notice of order that is being sent out to veterans. And if you bear with me, I'll just read this for, hopefully some of the veterans are watching. Dear Veteran, I would like to begin this letter with a thank you for your service to our country and the town of Norwood. Your sacrifices made our country and town a better place. Each year at this time, we usually request that you come into the town hall, sign the enclose letter to receive your veterans benefit. Due to the current closure of town, of town hall as a result of pandemic, we are mailing out the forms with a return envelope. If we sign date and include a copy of your award letter. Again, on behalf of a great country and town, we thank you for your service, Timothy McDonagh, Chairman of the Assessors. That information at this time?
Information file.
Second?
All in favor, Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's unanimous. We also have requests from the Friends of the Council on Aging. There's a many requests to allow them to include an insert in the February two thousand twenty-one light bills for membership drive.
Motion to approve. On the motion?
Yes, well, let's get a second.
I'll second the motion.
Got that. Thank you, Mr. Hajar. Mrs. Donahue, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to take this chance to thank the Friends of the, Bill McCoy and the Friends of the Council on Aging for all they do to help out with the seniors. The latest thing that they did was buy the seniors a new beautiful bus. But they've been working at it forever. They've done so much. And this is a once-in-a-year event fundraiser that they use and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the yes, good point. Thank you very kindly. All in favor, Paul, Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
And we do all agree with your comments and thank the Friends. And the chair votes aye. That's the unanimous vote. The next item is from the Norwood Lodge, B O L X, eleven twenty-four. I'm a member of that and my son is that organization and my son is an officer. This is just an administrative matter, but still to avoid any even potential conflict, I'm going to refuse myself and ask Mr. Maloney to handle this matter.
All right, very good. The Norwood Lodge, Elks, number eleven twenty-four is submitting an application for change of manager from Brian P. Fagan to Steve Vitale. Pleasure, the board? Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and to second. Anything further on the motion, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Maloney, Slachman Maloney. So Steve Vitale is, will be taking over and I'm sure that things at the Elks will be very waffle because his mother worked at the district court all of her life. Go in.
Very good. Anything further? Here in none will put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is four to nothing. Do I have to relinquish it now, Mr. Plasko?
You do. I've already, I've already got it. I already brought your gavel with me. Thank you.
Twice in one meeting. That may be a new record.
That's right. That's right.
This, somehow I ended up with the agenda on three or four pages. So if I mess up, certainly correct me. Think the next item is unfinished business, special town meeting articles. Mr. Mizuko, would you like to discuss that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There will be three articles on the special town meeting in reverse order. There will be our annual zero interest loan from the MWRA, which would be borrowing and paid for out of rates, of course. We're including that because we have one opportunity a year to get an approval for a zero interest loan. And if we delayed that to the fall, as we did with most of our capital, we would miss out on the opportunity to get the zero interest loan. And we, of course, want to get the zero interest loan. The second item is the capital to be paid out of free cash. There's two items, the school department that cannot be delayed to the fall. One of them being a number of vans for the special ed fleet, the other being the school technology, school classroom technology. And I'll just in brief explain those. The school projectors that they're buying for the classroom, that's actually their classroom information system. That's how they it's their digital chalkboard. It's how they play videos. It's how they get all their information on the screen. So if that system is not up and running in the fall, the high school actually can't engage in now or have a challenge engaging in actual instruction. The other item is the vans, which you do need to do spend some work on the special ed van fleet. Originally, there were four in the budget. There was a decision by capital outlay to go up to six, but then the school committee decided to pare it down to the four, which is needed before September to get the fleet up and running for the fall. We've actually increased the dollar amount on this. Originally, we were looking for thirty thousand dollars for each van. The cost has gone up. Amazon is actually part of the reason for that. They locally have ordered about five hundred vans from a local dealer and they've actually done that at several locations throughout the country. So some of the vans that end up getting used for special ed vans, now all of a sudden there is quite the demand as well as some supply chain issues as a result of COVID. So the cost is just going to thirty-five thousand dollars per van. We feel that that is the way the stuff that we got from the School Transportation Director that will allow us to successfully purchase four vans, assuming we can actually get the orders in on time, which we're hopeful we will. And then the first item will be just the internal transfers needed to close out the year. There are two that we need, certainly, two that we know with some certainty, if you'll excuse me for a moment. Sorry, I don't know if shutting the window actually blocked that sound, but
It did.
Going off behind me. Good. Sorry about that. One item is for our extended day program. That is a revenue-based program. As you're aware, the town has decided not to lay any of its staff off while we have funds available too, because that's a revenue-based program. The revenue has dried up. We need about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover the cost of the staff for the remainder of the year in that program. Had we not done this, we, they would have been subject to unemployment and the unemployment cost at a minimum would have been between fifty and seventy percent of that total number and ran the risk because the way unemployment works of going into the summer and even into the fall. So we potentially could have exposed the town to a total liability much higher than a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar number. A thirty thousand dollar transfer to the school lunch account. That's just for lost revenue as a result of COVID. We have to keep a certain balance in the school lunch account and it, it looks okay, but we're not a hundred percent certain. So to be safe and to make sure there's enough cash flow in there to operate, we will be bulking up that account. We thought we may need to do something similar with some rec accounts, but now we're not a hundred percent sure. The other items which we'll have to the board and to town meeting shortly are our internal budget transfers. The reason that those have been delayed is that we were waiting on our CARES Act funding from the state. And it's a little bit, we finally actually got it today. We wanted to wait until we physically had cash on hand. Because the way we have to track that money to ensure female reimbursement, whether we get the reimbursement or the state does, it's a complicated series of accounting entries. It's probably over a hundred and thirty journal entries that we got to do and we have to keep track as we're doing it to make sure we're tracking all of our funds for reimbursement. That will let us know finally what accounts may need to have some funds moved over. Could be six to eight. We normally have some payouts for somebody who may have retired with a lot of sick time. There doesn't appear to be anything too substantial in there, but we should have those final numbers. If not the end of tomorrow, then by the end of Thursday.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mizuko, something else?
Yeah, just one other item. So with those transfers, there's always the discussion and maybe at some point the board could have this discussion with the FinCom that do we do them all at special town meeting? Do we do them all as municipal relief transfers? I generally prefer to go away from the municipal relief transfers, but I'm doing it at town meeting. I prefer not to have to do them to begin with, but there's certain budget lines you can only bulk up so much and smaller departments end up having a cost. So a department that only has three or four full-time employees, they have a payout of a couple of weeks of sick time. There's nowhere in there to absorb it. We could come up with a system where we do them as municipal relief if it's less than X dollars and then put it to town meetings. It's more than that. Some of the transfers I know we'll have, we try every year to look at what's a recurring transfer and then actually address it in the following year's budget. So we're trying to get there with some of these where Labor, Legal Council is one of the examples where every year we seem to be moving some money into there. We probably need to come to the realization next year that that line needs to go up to actually account for the appropriate spending. And without any questions the board has?
Questions or comments? Mr. Ja?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with keeping it short and simple, Tony. Three articles, no problem. I completely understand all three articles, just for clarification purposes. Article one, the funding is also free cash. It doesn't stay in there like it does for Article two and Article three talks about where that money is coming from, the rates. So it is free cash.
I'm sorry. We, the internal transfers, so all the general government internal transfers always come from somewhere else in the budget and we believe there's actually enough funding left in probably the snow and ice line in the general government budget to cover the school, two school items. And there again, you could take those out of free cash and then the money you didn't spend out of snow and ice flows into free cash. So it's six one way, half a dozen the other way.
Oh, specifically the two hundred and five thousand is coming from where? Just so we know.
The snow and ice line has funding left in it this year only. So that's where we would propose.
We didn't have any.
Correct. We didn't have much of the winter.
Right. Okay. So we're all, I just want to make sure everyone understands that's where the money is coming from.
Sounds like a good plan. Otherwise, that just returns to free cash anyhow.
So it's, I'm sorry.
So if we take it out of free cash or we let this go back to free cash, at the end of the day, it's going to balance out.
All right. So we're voting at the moment, Mr. Mizuko. It's, it's, it's a little incomplete as to exactly what the numbers are. And we have some numbers, but we don't have all of them, but we know we're doing internal transfers. If I get that right?
Correct. And we'll have a little chart that'll be a simple summary for town meeting members, all the accounts that need funding, the dollar amount. And if we, in this particular year, we can take them from one source. That's a little bit of an oddity in an odd years it is that we usually don't have one budget line that we can say, well, it's all here in this one budget line. And let's go. Normally, if you remember, we have some transfers where we're taking eighteen hundred dollars from here and six hundred dollars from here and four thousand dollars from here. We're trying to pigeon it together. We have one available budget line. We think we can get it taken care of out of there or at least very close to it.
All right. So, so, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So the motion is ours. And we know, we know in concept what we want to do. We are not certain of all the numbers yet, but you at least want we have some ideas. So you want us to vote to, to endorse tonight? Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Anything further? Any motions?
Good job. You had it right.
I forget what I said, Dave. You go ahead. Just so you want to vote on each individual article, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think if you have a different position on each article, one, two, and three, but if you think there's a unanimous feeling on those, then one motion would be sufficient.
Okay. So on, on article two, though, Mr. Mizuko, we're looking at, I think, is school vans of about a hundred and forty thousand and technology of how much? Sixty-four, a hundred and sixty-four, is it?
Hundred and sixty-four is closer to the number. My, my agenda also did not print correctly, so.
I think it was. So, so, okay, so it, it's about three hundred thousand for technology improvements and school vans.
Correct.
That's article two. All right. And I'll, I'll make a motion that we endorse all three then, if you want, Mr. Chairman. Just another little clarification on the numbers. I'm satisfied.
That's fine. Now second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Paul, Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. So we'll be in support of those articles before the special town meeting. And you'll try to get some information out as early as possible to town meeting members?
Absolutely.
I thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is Building Inspector Matthew Walsh submitting his building report for May of twenty twenty. So Mizuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to point out to the board that building permit activity for May actually continued to be fairly strong. We did put up some fairly good numbers and already into June, I know Moderna has actually pulled an additional permit for some work on their property. It was a couple of million dollars worth of, worth of work. So that was also a decent permit. So building activity continues to be fairly robust in town.
Right.
Well, I also just want to follow up because Tony is not, not just right. He's real. I mean, through eleven months, we're ahead of any of the past five-year numbers. So we're doing really well on the number of permits. And I was talking to the guy at Home Depot when you were saying that this is setting all records. So for the past two and a half months, so many people are doing their a lot of work at their houses. And I think this is a reflection of that. May not be huge permit amounts, but the number of permits through eleven months exceeds any of the past five years or equal, equal to last year and way ahead of the three years before that. So it really is looking, looking good.
The line?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Perhaps this is for Mr. Mizuko, but is there, do we struggle at all with capacity in the building department to make sure that we're getting to all these permits and reviewing plans?
We don't, you know, we've had, we have a unique model where we maintain five full-time inspectors or five full-time staff in the office. And a lot of times towns shuffle in between part-time inspectors and per diem inspectors and it causes a problem when you, you end up having a lot of turnover. We don't have that. So we have the building inspector, the assistant inspector, the commissioner, the assistant inspector. Then we have a full-time electrical inspector, a full-time plumbing and gas inspector. We have some alternates we can use and our recently retired building inspector, our building commissioner, Mr. Schubert, has said he would come back on a per diem basis as needed to fill in. So we're lucky that we have some degree of surge capacity in the office. We, we anticipated a big drop in permits and then sort of a spike in permits. And they just didn't drop as much as we thought. I think to Mr. Jar's point, I think there's a lot of homework being going on, work at home being done. And some commercial projects have continued. The state did not shut down construction. Boston and Cambridge did. So we continue building here in, in Norwood and businesses and homes have continued to pull permits. So we're, we're well placed and we've got Mr. Schubert on the inactive reserve if we need to pull him in. If the capacity gets there, but the inspectors have, have been quite busy.
That's great. Thank you.
I'd add to that, Mr. Lane, that I was talking with Mr. Walsh and they still have on their plate of duties to be the seal of weights and measures. And that is putting a little bit of a crutch on them. But if they can get rid of those duties, they should be in pretty good shape as Mr. Mizuka was going on. I think they'll want to get alternate fifty notes duties to another group or another, the state themselves even. I guess in a lot of towns do this work. So they'll want to get into that and then we should be in flying position on the building.
Mr. Plask.
I'm sorry?
Did you have a question? Did I see your hand?
A comment, a comment, please. As fellow board members may have noticed on the, on the monthly report, the number one permit, value zero. I wonder what kind of work that was. It's in a pretty big complex, too.
The kind I do.
Yeah, that's very curious. Thank you.
Mr. Mizuko, what are you looking for? Just your comment?
Just briefly, while we're discussing the Building Inspector's office, three other things. One, we, we are looking at whether we could get rid of being the seal of weights and measures. Other communities I've worked in, it's been done by the state and it's a much better system. It's a little bit complex for, not complex, it's, it's time-consuming for the value that we get out of it. We in the next year or so should be deploying online inspection software. Many communities have done this and that's part of our Tyler Muse conversion, which will be great. And I mentioned, we, we had a great building commissioner retire. He was replaced by Matt Walsh, who's a great building commissioner. We have four great inspectors, but I would be remiss if I didn't also mention Debbie Frangioso, who is the, the admin and the staff support in that office, who's the real reason the economy actually turns.
Good save, Mr. Mizuka. Is there a motion to file information? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Hajar?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Matter's stable. File, thank you. Also, monthly report from Chief William Brooks, the third at the Norwood Police Department. Uh, also monthly report from Chief William Brooks, the third at the Nold Police Department. Any questions, comments, or motions to file?
Comment please?
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Um, looking at the report, when you compare the years, um, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and this, this year. I can't believe the difference in the figures. The so far, as far as like, say, for example, violations, thousand twenty-five year to date. And two thousand eighteen, four thousand seven hundred ninety-nine. So this wasn't because of the virus, it's been slowing down that much?
It is. We average about seventy to ninety police calls per day and that's sort of total log incidents. And there were some days with COVID where that was down under forty. Uh, so the chief and I monitor that daily, but, uh, it's picked back up. But there was a huge dip for quite a while. Police calls were, um, a third of what they normally are.
I can understand the part about the arrest because the courts are closed. You know, what do you do with the person when you arrest them? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you. So there's motion to file?
I move.
Second, all in favor? Paul, unanimous, Mr. Maloney?
Hi.
Mr. Lane?
Hi.
Mr. Hajar?
Hi.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Additionally, the chief sent us another, uh, letter submitting a copy of his commendation above Officer Baker for his absence on two thirty, twenty twenty. Any comments? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move that, uh, this involved an incident where he, uh, where Officer Baker did an outstanding job in, in saving a life and, uh, in a bad situation. I move that the board sent him the appropriate commendation. Right, his file.
Uh, uh, I'll second that.
Mr. Ja?
Yeah, and also on the, on the motion, just, um, they, they did an outstanding job. That, that was for a short period of time circus. Uh, what ha- happened down there and through his dedicated work and his training, uh, they were able to get him out. And I know he was helicoptered out, um, but basically saved his life, uh, with that, since there was, um, a, a bad stab wound. So, uh, congratulations.
Alright, anything further? All in favor? Paul, Mr. Maloney?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Lane?
Hi.
Mr. Hajar?
Hi.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so we'll send that along. I'm sure Mrs. Malva Hill will do a nice job putting that together for us. Alright, um, additional, oh, conservation agent Al Getz. He submitted his notice of retirement from this position of conservation agent effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. I can't say enough wonderful things about Mr. Al Getz. He has been a conscientious protector of our environment here in Norwood. He has always been so honest. He has been so thorough and he's been patient. And he's given us all the information that we need about the different, get aspects of the questions. And yes, he's entitled to arrest. Boy, am I sorry to see him go. I don't know how we'll replace him.
Okay, any other comments? I would, Mr. Ja?
Yeah, I just also want to, um, publicly thank Al Getz, not just for his work, um, for the town of Norwood with regards to conservation. He certainly did, uh, yeoman's work. Um, but I also want to thank him for, he did a lot of work with, uh, scouts. And especially for those trying to become an Eagle Scout, where they had to pick a community service project. And he worked with them. Um, and personally, he worked with both my boys as they both became Eagle Scouts. Working on town projects where they had to do something, um, you know, involved getting, and, you know, both of them were through him and working with the DPW. So, um, I really can't thank him enough for all the years of service that he did, not just as an agent. But through other services that he provided to individuals outside of that. So, thank you, Al.
I would thank him for his number of years of service also. And, uh, maybe we should send him a letter acknowledging of that fact. And, and I did note that, uh, the carbon copy quite a few people, but everyone but the town clerk. It should be submitted with the town clerk, so that could be part of your motion, Mr. Maloney.
Yes, sir.
Second?
Again.
All in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous? Mr. Maloney, aye, Mr. Lane?
Hi.
Mr. Hajar?
Hi.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We'll go to the managers' agenda, but before we get to that and any other additional new business, uh, I want to mention that we plan this evening to go into executive session. We need to discuss, uh, the local bargaining litigation, uh, not litigation, but bargaining with the local fourteen fifty-one, uh, memory end of agreement with library unit, also with the clerkery unit. I believe that, uh, depending on discussion, it could be detrimental to our position in those negotiations. So I believe it's appropriate that we would go in to executive session for that purpose. If we do so vote, I would not, uh, anticipate that there'd be a need for a further, uh, this, this matter. So we would only open, uh, for the purposes of adjournment. Is there a motion? Want to take the session for those? So move?
Second?
On the motion, Mr. Ja? Okay, all in favor? Paul, unanimous, Mr. Maloney?
Hi.
Mr. Ja?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Lane?
Hi.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes, so that is unanimous as well. Thank you. That brings us to the managers' update. Anything additional, Mr. Mizuko?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just a few items. One is a notice on the tax payment due date. The last date for payment of real estate and personal property taxes that originally do May first is Monday, June twenty-ninth. It is not June thirtieth as we originally thought it was. The state did, uh, the data set by state law and the state normally sets these to the end of the fiscal year. For some reason, they decided one day before the end of the fiscal year would be appropriate as opposed to the last day of the fiscal year. So anyone who was intending to pay, uh, their property the excise taxes, it is June twenty-ninth and not June thirtieth.
Mr. Mizuko, you know what? It might be that they said sixty days. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, that, that's all I can think of.
You know, we, we work on our fiscal year. The state just makes up things. Result, it's one day before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the deadline also applies to motor vehicle excise tax bills issued after the state of, the state's declaration of emergency on March tenth. So again, please, Monday, June twenty-ninth, not Tuesday, the thirtieth. The general government budget presentation will be tomorrow evening. We will be recording that. Uh, it'll be a shortened version of what we did last year. Last year, I believe we took three sessions for, uh, the general government budget, which included capital. Of course, we're not doing much capital. So this will be a presentation similar to the one the board received several weeks ago on the budget. Uh, we'll do it on go-to-meeting so people can join in and ask questions. We'll record that and get it out on our social media feeds and on Norwood Community Media, who will be recording that as well. Uh, we'll also do two follow-up Q and A sessions for, uh, the public via Facebook Live. We're experimenting with that this year. A little bit challenging because we can't present the information on it, but we'll see if people find those, uh, useful and if they tune in. Uh, and then town meeting is of course Monday. Uh, this weekend should be our first weekend of weekends on Central where, uh, we will have an outdoor socially distant dining area placed on Central Street. We will have, uh, tables out there, some lights strung up, um, some turf down to make it a little bit more user-friendly. Uh, to help some of the businesses in the area downtown with the takeout. Town Common has been busier, uh, than it ever has been in, uh, recent memory. The number of people having picnics and just out there enjoying their time is good. So we think this is timely. Uh, light and DPW and planning have been doing a lot of work on it. So it should be, uh, a really nice outdoor, uh, for us for the summer. I do ask everyone to bear with us as this is our first weekend. We'll be getting it up and running. There'll be some learning pains, but hopefully it'll be a good addition. The weather looks good for the weekend and hopefully it'll be helpful to both the public and some of the businesses in the area. Uh, outdoor dining, we did mention earlier, I think has been going very well. Uh, the health department and planning and public works have been checking in regularly with these businesses. I've been talking to some of the managers and, uh, they're reporting that it seems to be working. The feedback from the public seems to be positive. Uh, so, so far, so good. Knock on wood. Um, one weekend, we can report that we have not had any problems. Nobody has had to call, uh, the health department or the police department or the fire department. So so far, things are working well, uh, and it is nice to see some vibrancy, uh, downtown with people walking around and a lot of folks going into, uh, wanting to go to one restaurant and it being, uh, a wait and then they're going and, uh, having, uh, a snack at another restaurant and coming back then. Uh, that vibrancy is certainly something nice to see downtown. Last but not least, uh, as we move on from, uh, talking about our vibrant downtown is, uh, this coming Saturday, uh, Norwood United will be hosting a, um, a community conversation. This is a group of us that got together being led by Officer Jeff Baguma to discuss race in the community. And this will be a community listening session at Indean, so that is, uh, the area right behind Hawes Pool, uh, Saturday from two to four o'clock. Uh, the event will, um, there'll be a chance for minorities in the community to come and just share their experiences. It'll be moderated by Officer Baguma and a few others. So, uh, we look forward to that event. I encourage you to attend if you are able to. Two to four on Saturday. The rain date is Sunday, uh, at the same location. We've done the last one with the Town Common. This one, uh, we're going to try to do in South Norwood and we'll see how that, uh, out. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I missed it or you feel to say tomorrow, the presentation, what time is that?
About five-thirty.
And how do people find out how to tune in?
Uh, it'll be on our website and we'll be getting it. We've been pushing it out on social media as well, the go-to-meeting link for that. And NCM.
Is it on NCM?
Uh, they'll be filming it. I'm not sure if it'll be live on NCM. I would have to confirm that with them.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any questions on the manager, Mr. Ja?
Yeah, so, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony, is this just on the general government budget or is this the entire town budget?
Uh, it's, it doesn't include the school budget. They've prepared a separate presentation. It's a little different than a normal year where, uh, so the FinCon record their, uh, budget message, if you will, that they normally deliver at town meeting ahead of time. Uh, that's on our website and on the school's website. The school department has prepared what they would normally do, their budget presentation at, um, town meeting. General government seems to do theirs before. For some reason, it would actually in the future maybe make sense that we all do them at the same time. Uh, we had always intended and we mentioned quite a few times to both the finance commission and budget balancing that we would do some sort of a digital budget presentation, similar to what we did last year. Um, just slightly different, obviously, given because we can't just host in the auditorium and have folks attend.
Right, so to clarify and to ensure that the public knows, especially the town meeting members. And the, the FinCon and the school department have pre-recorded their own town meeting message. It's, i- and it's something that people should listen to. They're both about twenty, maybe twenty-two minutes long. They, they can look it up on NCM or the school's website. But these messages were intended to provide budget information to town meeting members before town meeting. So that we're not sitting there, um, listening to, uh, you know, forty minutes of presentations or an hour of presentations. They were asked to do these before town meeting starts so that town meeting members can sit, review them and then just be able to ask questions at town meeting. Not ask for, uh, a presentation because you're not going to get one. So just as a public service to make sure that those presentations have been pre-recorded, they're available on NCM or the school's website. And I urge town meeting members to look at those, to get your information, to develop any questions that you may have of the public officials, uh, starting next Monday.
Thank you. Maloney, did I see your hand earlier, sir?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Uh, first of all, thanks to, uh, Mr. Hajar. I did want to mention that as well that the, that, uh, Superintendent Thompson and, uh, Mrs. Bodenhoff did, uh, record a presentation at NCM about the school budget, about the school department in the upcoming year. So it would be wise of town meeting members to go either to the school department's, uh, webpage, uh, or to NCM and see it. And the finance commission, uh, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Anne Haley recorded a presentation as well. David just covered all that, but it is a good idea, I want to reiterate. And the only other thing, um, uh, just sort of a, I'm getting a good vibe from the downtown, uh, outdoor, uh, dining thing going on. The vibrations are very good. It's vibrant and there's a great deal of vibrancy going on and everyone likes that. So, uh, you know, so seriously, it has worked out well so far. And Mr. Mizuko, are we going to talk about anything to do with Washington Street or does that lie ahead for us?
Uh, we believe we'll have a proposal for the board in about a week or two. We're still trying to pull together some of the metrics and work with the businesses to make sure that they would be interested in it. So we can get the board a complete, uh, proposal.
Okay, so we have some picnic tables on the common. We'll have, uh, weekends on Central. Outdoor dining continues. Uh, so we're in pretty good shape. And if you, if we decide to do something where we block off Washington Street for any part of a Saturday evening or something, we can discuss that, uh, as well. So good. I think it's working out pretty well. We're getting a good vibe from it. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's, uh, discouraging and serious as this COVID situation has been for all of us. The slow opening up and the outdoor dining, everything you people just said, the vibrancy, the, it's really amazing to me, the use of the, uh, common. With just those few picnic tables and people putting out blankets. I've seen a little bit of that in the past, but nothing like what's been going on in the last couple of weeks. And if you go down and walk around the Coakley, um, track down there, the, uh, field, um, trail around the fields or any of the open fields in town, you see, or even along the streets, the number of people walking. I, I just hope that when things get better, they don't abandon the use of these facilities and, uh, take full advantage of them. It's great to see them, uh, in use at this time. Anything further? Uh, no further questions for the chairman? If there's any other new business, we'll, uh, hear from members at this point. Otherwise, we'll go into executive session. They want to have anything further to say at this time?
Just one more. Welcome to, uh, Helen and Matthew. Good to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Is this where we're doing the selectman's agenda?
Yes, the new business, do you have anything to bring up?
I'll wait my turn.
Go ahead, your turn.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank selectmen Alan Howard and selectman Paul Bishop for all of the years of service to the town. They both served the town beautifully and we appreciate all of the work he did. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mizuka and all of his group that ran this recent election for the town. This was a very unusual election. Number one, the period is six months instead of a four-month. Number two, when you have to sanitize each voting place in between people voting, when you have to pass out bags with gloves and masks and lots of detail about making it safe for people to vote, that was a huge job. And, and poor, um, town clerk Mary Lou Holland, uh, all of the absentee ballots, she had over seven hundred absentee ballots, which is the highest we've ever had in his freedom of town. But everybody took it in stride, your staff and your, your whole group. They took it in stride and they went along beautifully and the job got done. And we got a good vote out for such, for such a rough, rough time. I'd also like to thank all of the people who helped me on my campaign. They know how much I loved the job and how badly I wanted the job back. And they all worked very, very hard. And finally, it was the people who went out and voted. This was a hard election. We had lots of good candidates and it was a hard choice to make. But thank you, everybody who went out to vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, anything this evening?
I think, uh, Mrs. Donahue said it all. Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to be here and, uh, I'm excited to see what we can get done.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ja, I saw your hand, sir?
Yeah, I, I also want to congratulate Matt and Helen. Welcome them both aboard. It'll be, uh, good to, to work with them. Lot going on, so we could, uh, use, uh, use their assistance and guidance as we go through these tough times. I also want to thank, uh, the clerk's office, Mary Lou, her team, and Tony's and his staff. Uh, really for doing an outstanding job. Um, an election that will be remembered for a long, long time, starting out where everyone is, uh, putting out signs and literature in February and, and then stopping for two and a half months to get, get back going so they could actually have an election in June. Um, so it was a long election, cost a lot of people a lot of time and, and energy. And that's the way it goes, but enough people turned out. It was good to see. And it went as smooth and here one complaint at all. A lot of thanks go to, uh, Tony and his staff, especially Mary Lou and her team. So I congratulate them for making it as simple as it was, because I'm sure it wasn't. So thank you.
Correct. Uh, anything, Mr. Maloney?
No, thank you, sir. I'm all set. I've talked enough.
Okay, uh, I would, uh, reiterate those comments from my colleagues. And again, welcome, uh, Mr. Lane. Welcome back, Mr. Donahue. And I thi- I think I thanked Mr. Howard and Mr. Bishop a couple of times now, but maybe for the final time. The service most appreciated, uh, to this board and to the community. Thank you for your nine years of service as a selectman. So, nothing further, uh? Did I take the vote on going into executive session?
Yes, you did.
Alright, then at this time, we'll sign. All right. Then at this time, we'll sign off, go into executive session for the purposes indicated earlier. Thank you, everyone.